So please rise for their pleasurable allegiance.
That's true.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first thing on the agenda is County Executive George Latimer. He is actually coming from the other side of the county. So we said if I could fill it, if I could, you know, fill form until he got here. So we'll start with announcements and then we'll keep working our way until he arrives. First announcement is a public hearing to consider local law regarding home occupation is scheduled for Monday, July 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Perfect segue for Mary Ann getting here.
I thought I had some time. I was going to be good.
Take your time for public forums.
Okay, what this law, local law does is kind of modernize the definition of home occupation since so many more people are working from home anymore. And that was one of the recommendations of the county committee. So what the law does, well, it adds a definition of home occupation and then it has kind of broken into two parts. One is essentially home occupations that are just allowed, they're accessory uses, but he hasn't right. You don't have to get any permit, you're not going to have to register with the village clerk. And right now, all home occupations is supposed to register with a village clerk. I don't think many do. But anyway, so if your home occupation doesn't have customers, clients, or other persons who visit the premises for business purposes, other than occasionally, then you can have the some occupation, but there are some conditions and they are that it has to be carried on by a resident of the premises. It's clearly incidental and subordinate to the residential use of the premises. You can have the equivalent of one full-time assistant, a non-resident full-time assistant. It has to be carried, it can't be carried outside of the building or the dwelling unit. And I'll get back to that in a little bit. And there's no display of goods, supplies, or advertising visible from outside. There's a sign permitted, delivery and pickup of parcels, as well as the quantity of waste material can't be more than what would be expected if there weren't a home occupation there. Recognizing, of course, that there's a lot more package delivery and more, but there can't be any offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, odor, and it can discharge into any sewer drain or ground any material that's radioactive, poisonous, or detrimental to sewer plant operation. And most importantly, the occupation shall in no manner change the residential character of the dwelling unit. So if you've got a home occupation like that, you just have it, you don't need any permission from the clerk. If, however, there are employees, customers, clients who visit the premises for business reasons, then, there's all those same requirements, but it has to be by a resident of the premises and there can't be any offensive noise in delivery. But in this situation, you have to, hold on one second. Oh, this requires special permit. And I know special permits can sometimes seem burdensome, but it only makes sense and somebody has to review it to make sure that there's adequate parking and that it's not going to look back traffic very much because there are clients going. There could be some business that it's, you know, just minimal, but there could be some that's more and so that you need planning board review of it. Other than that, the regulations are pretty much the same. There is, there are a couple of extra things that if there's a music dance theater, similar studio, it has to be equipped so that the sounds are duly annoying to other people in the neighborhood. And then there has to be adequate parking. Doesn't necessarily say you have to have a certain number of parking spaces because it depends where you live, but the planning board will review it and decide whether there's adequate parking for that use. And then it says, it gives a couple of conditions that the planning board could attach if it seems necessary, they could regulate the time and days of the week when people can come and visit, the number of employees, let the fact of which it's in. Now, another fairly big change is right now, home occupations are only allowed in a single-family district, only in single-family houses. This expands it so that they would be allowed in anything, in one-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or multifamily dwellings. And in any of those places, if it's, and hasn't right, it still hasn't right, if it's a special permit, it's still required, a special permit. I think that pretty much covers it.
Good timing, Mary Ann.
Good timing. I think that pretty much covers it. Okay, wow. We had it going.
That was perfect timing. But before we finish, I will, well, one thing I just wanted to say was if we haven't already been sent a copy of it to the planning board, and I guess I'll just make a motion to have it to schedule a public hearing, consider local law regarding home occupations for Monday, July 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in Village Hall, if I have a second. All in favor? And that was perfect timing. We only got through one announcement, so you could have been much later. Traffic was too late, but we'd like to welcome County Executive George Latimer. I think this is, you're only your 29th municipality you're visiting. County Executive is gracious enough to come to each local municipality to, A, introduce himself and B, share some thoughts on shared services and how the county and the local municipalities work together, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to hand this to you if you might pass it out to the rest of my colleagues. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight, and I know you've got a long agenda, so I'll try to make it short. I'm making the effort to go out to every single town, village, and city council on your terms to let you know that we're going to try very hard to create a new relationship with the county government with local governments. A cooperative relationship, one in which you have your authority and responsibilities and the county with its authority and responsibilities works with you rather than, you know, takes an attitude of uncooperation because of our responsibilities. What I passed out to you is an executive order that I signed on my second day in the job, which is almost six months ago, and it applies to all county government agencies, and it's entitled the Good Neighbor Policy. That's my main reason for visiting here, although there's some other issues as well. And basically what it does is it changes the way the county government will make decisions that might involve your community and every other community in the county. As you read through, what it basically says is that if the county government has an action to take within a local community, this village or any community, and it's within county facilities, it's a sewer treatment plant, it's a county road, it's a pump station, it's, you know, some other facility that the county owns and operates, park perhaps, we normally have ability to act unilaterally, as you can act unilaterally on your parks and your facilities and so forth. But we will restrain taking an action for 60 days to allow the local government, in this case, the village, to be able to discuss the issue at hand and determine whether you have a position on it and whether we should be aware of what that position is before we go forward. Basic situation is all of the county commissioners and departments have been unnoticed since the first of the year, that if they have a major proposed change of any sort that would affect in any way, shape, or form the host community of that facility, that they are to come to a regular meeting of that local government, just as we are tonight, and present what that plan is to you. Not we'll have a meeting in White Plains at 10 o'clock on Wednesday morning, show up or else, but we come to you. And commissioners and so forth might not involve me directly, but we come and we present it to you, and as a duly elected people who represent this village, you can ask whatever questions you want on that policy or that proposal, that change. It could be anything. We could have a major sewer pipe change, which will involve closing a road and a detour. We come to you to explain what it is and to take your questions. Then at that point, after that opportunity, there's a 60-day period. It can be less if you choose for it to be less, but it's your option. And over that 60-day period of time, you have the opportunity to do whatever research you want to do on the issue. You have an opportunity to hold a public forum and have input from your citizens. And then at the end of that period, up to 60 days, we would welcome a letter from you that would be a letter of opposition, a letter of support, or a letter of neutrality on whatever it is that we were prepared to do. Obviously, if it's a support or neutrality, it's moot, but if it's opposition and you lay out reasons that you think are a problem, then we're obliged, our commissioners, our departments are obliged, to address those questions before we move forward and take our action. And if you view it very simply, I call it the Good Neighbor Policy. If the mayor and I were next-door neighbors and I was going to put a shed on my property and we were on good terms, I would go to him and I'd say, "Brian, I'm planning to do this in the backyard. Walk through it with me. Let me show you what I'm going to do." And you'd look at it. And if you thought it cast a shadow or drainage on your property, you'd say, "George, that's not the right place for it. What if you, could you move it a little bit? And if I could accommodate you?" Because we're neighbors, you would do that, I would do that. And that's the same principle that I'm trying to have now. And this came from the fact that once upon a time, I was like you, I was a councilor in my home community. And in the community that I live in, the county has a very large presence, and the county never consulted the local board when it decided what it wanted to do. Its attitude was, we're the bigger government, this is our property, we'll do whatever the heck we want to do. I never thought I'd be county executive, so now I'm county executive. Now I can change the policy and I could try to open up the process to some degree. Now, you know, every community doesn't have the same impact with the county government. This could be pretty moot in most cases, but at least this policy now has the force of law within the executive branch. We've submitted to the Board of Legislators to turn it into a permanent law, and if they do decide to make it a permanent law, then it will apply no matter who the county executive is. But right now, this is an executive order that's binding on all the departments of county government, except for those we don't control. And we don't control the Board of Legislators, the District Attorney, the county clerk, and the Board of Elections. So with that thought in mind, I want to highlight one thing. The, I mean, anybody who reads these kinds of resolutions, and any members of the public are welcome to see this as well, there's obviously one of those phrases that you could drive a truck through. In the third, fourth paragraph down of this, it says, "Prior to any significant proposed action." What's significant? I didn't want to define it narrowly. I wanted it to be open to interpretation, so that if you thought it was significant, then you could send a letter through, your administrator to the county, "We understand you're thinking of doing this. We treat this as a significant action, and therefore we want to have the benefit to go through the Good Neighbor Policy procedure." And we've actually used this already now in a couple of cases since we've announced it for a couple of local situations. But that phrase is vague, and so I interpret it to mean, from my perspective, anything that you think is important or that we think is important. And we're trying to be proactive on this, just so that we can try to create a different climate. We have a lot of things that we could, in theory, work on together. We've restarted the Community Development Block Grant Program, which didn't exist for the last five years for a variety of reasons. We're working on shared services, which we hope will have some benefit. It really is an option on the local government to determine if there's a basis for the sharing of a service. We have this assault deduction issue that we have to deal with. The state has created the system that will involve towns and cities, not directly villages, but all of us having to potentially create these charitable donation structures and all of those things require a certain amount of faith and trust. And my coming to you tonight, my preparation of this thing, is to basically not say, give a blank check and say, "Okay, whatever you guys want to do is good," but to restart the relationship in a different way. This is not about what political party you're in, it's not about what level of government you're in. The voters, the people who live in these communities don't really care. They don't even know what we do versus what you do. They don't know. All they know is they pay taxes, they aggregate the number of taxes, they say, "My taxes are going up." Doesn't matter if you keep them low and I keep them low and the town keeps them low, if the school district raises it, they know that their taxes have gone up. It doesn't matter. So we want to try to have a cooperative relationship, and that's why I stopped by tonight. So if there are any questions on this or anything else, I'm happy to try to entertain them. And whenever you're done, I'm happy to leave.
Does anyone have anything specific to this? Otherwise, I just have one general.
Go ahead.
Before I had this job, I had a much more important role as a volunteer fireman. And one of the great shared services, and I guess it's an essential service because we couldn't provide our own, is the training center, which is fantastic. It's only gotten better since the first time I was over there, you know, 20, almost 25 years ago. The only thing I'll advocate for publicly tonight is basically passed from all the chiefs of Battalion 14, which Irvington is one of the departments in Battalion 14, was that all the chiefs are unanimous in support of John Cullen for the Department of Emergency Services. I don't know where you are in that, but I just thought I'd relay that.
We've kept John in that position and Jennifer Walker as a deputy commissioner. In general, if you noticed, even though there was a change in parties with the last administration, we kept most of what we considered to be the professional staff in place, and in EOC we did keep them. So your endorsement of John is welcomed. If you want to express that in a letter or something like that, that's certainly fine to have. You know, our sense was is that there are things that represent a change in policy between this new administration and the past administration, but that the people who were doing the work of the government, the professionals, need not be attached to policies that were not theirs to make. So I think we're pretty happy with them, but by the same token, that you expressed that, Brian, is very helpful to us.
Great, and I'd be happy to write a letter as well.
Great, and I'm sure he'd welcome it, too.
Absolutely.
So I've got one.
Sure.
This is a more difficult one. It's not an exact answer, but I've felt for years now that one of the things lacking, first of all, you know, the county planning commission was, has been really reduced in effectiveness, size, scope, effectiveness. That would be really helpful to get it built back up to where it can actually be of greater service to all the communities in the county. But more than that, I've always felt that there was something missing in the planning process that has to do with a much more proactive stance in bringing together communities which are surrounding major developments that may impact them. I'm thinking of Rivertown Square is one, Ridge Hill is another. And it always seems like, yeah, someone gets into the process kind of late sometimes and they can get like, "Oh yeah, I got a couple million dollars to build and enhance an exit off the, you know, off of 87," whatever it is. It seems like we're missing something, and one of the areas I see coming up is the Route 9 corridor transportation planning project, which is the first one I've seen that's really, in a while, that's really been, you know, coupled all the River Towns together effectively into one planning process. So somehow thinking about how to enhance that, achieve that in more projects across the communities where it will count, where the neighbors' input is important.
Well, I think you've highlighted an important issue, Mark, and I think one of the things that we've looked at is the fact that the county government has defined itself in fairly recent years as a corporate entity without considering the other governments as partners and more like separate corporate entities. So it's as if we're a corporation, you're a corporation, and we deal with you as an external entity, not as if we are brother governments. And I've described, I said, "I think that the county government is a big local government." We're not a little Albany, we're a big town. And all of the towns, cities, villages are brother governments, and so are sister governments. And so when we have these kinds of issues, we should work together. The first test that we're having right now a little further up the line is at Indian Point, and the closure of Indian Point. And the county has, under the last few months, has engaged directly with Cortlanda Buchanan and Pete's Guild to be involved with them alongside of them as we start to deal with what's going to happen economically when Entergy closes. And so to the extent that that happens on Nine, to the extent that happens on any of these issues, I think our mindset is to try to be helpful and work side by side. Now, you're right in pointing out that the county planning department and most departments of county government have really had major reductions in staff. And that was part of, you know, I campaigned last year with the prior incumbent, we competed, we litigated all these policies, and I was pretty clear about the fact that I thought that we had decimated so many parts of county government. When I was a councilman all those years ago in my home community on the other side of the county, we used the county planning department for lots of things that helped us because we had one planner and we had no way to be able to do certain things. We would have a major development, developer come into the town, and they'd come in with lawyers and planners and architects, and we had one person and one county, one city attorney to try to deal with it. We could turn to the county planning department, they could provide us with professional maps and resources. So our intent is to try to get that back to that level. It's going to be hard to do. Right now, we're down like 22 people in the department, and we're looking for a new commissioner. We had over 100 people at one point in time in that department. That's a major reduction. And I understand that people, my two, all of us, you know, worry about taxes, and people say, "Well, you know, what do those government officials do?" Well, they may not know what the benefit of those positions are because they're professional services, which other professionals, like in the village, would understand. So we're going to try to restock it as best as we can within the parameters of not raising taxes dramatically. It's going to take time. You're not going to see it, you'll see some improvement, but you won't see, you know, exponential improvement until we can go a few years down the line. And I do think if you identify any regional issues, whether where you're sitting, it's anything that deals with the river, anything that deals with the transportation corridors that require joint activity amongst the villages, the Rivertown villages and the towns, reach out to us and the county can be a partner in those things. We have some resources that the locals don't have, but we'll be at the table with you. Tourism is a perfect example of it. Things when you deal with Metro North are issues, and I interpret our interests the same as yours to the greater extent. So reach out to us, and hopefully we'll be proactive as we see these things arise.
I could follow up as a segue.
Did I touch a few of the issues there, Connie?
Tourism. It's the same kind of issue that Mark is bringing up, that when you think about tourism, that, you know, we would like here in the River Towns, obviously, but recreational tourism, heritage tourism, all that could definitely use the partnership that the county could provide. So tell me a little bit about where you are.
Well, I would say right off the bat, the simplest thing to do for the sake of a meeting like this is have your administrator call Natasha Caputo, who's our tourism person, have them come here, meet with your local people, she'll talk about programs that we're trying to institute and see how they mesh with the things you're doing. And the reality is, is that the reasons to come and tour, Lindhurst, you know, the Washington-Irving Homestead, further up and down the line, you know, those things are not county-owned facilities. And when we try to argue, "Come," we don't say, "Come to Westchester," we say, "Come to Hudson Valley." And so we're all part of that valley. So I think Natasha and the team that she has can cooperate with your team, you know, and hopefully find common ground.
Yeah, well, we will, I'll definitely be in touch, and that's the way to go. Thank you.
And I'm going to leave a couple of copies of my business cards over here. I guess I'm going to leave them all here at this desk, and if you want to circulate them, anybody wants to reach out, Mr. Mayor, yourself, any of your members, feel free.
Great.
So I appreciate the time.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you all very much.
Go home and have dinner at a reasonable hour.
Yeah, well, I got one more stop. I got one more meeting to go to. It's all right. I wanted the job, I got it, so now I got to do it.
We appreciate you coming by.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Anytime you want to come by, let us know.
I'm going to be back for your fair, was it this weekend or next weekend?
Yes.
I hear it's a lot of fun, so, there we go. So get the plug in. I want to tell all my friends on the other side of the county that they have to spend this weekend over here. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Have a good night. Good night. Nice to be with you all. Great to see you. Now back to the line there. Next up is a public hearing, consider local law regarding snow and ice removal for Monday, July 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in Village Hall.
I'll be great this one out.
No, no, as quick as possible.
This one is very quick. Right now, everybody's familiar with the obligation of adjacent landlords, of adjacent property owners to clean the sidewalks of snow and ice, and the only remedy right now is for the village to do it and charge the property owner back, and that doesn't work in all situations, in a lot of situations. So this adds a penalty that any person who violates any provision of this article essentially doesn't remove the snow or ice, are subject to a penalty, if not more than $250. Now alternatively, it's solely at the option of the village, the village can clean it up and charge back. And that's with this one.
My other question on that is, is it alternatively, can you also be fined and we clean it up? Because to me, if we clean it up, I don't think people should get a fine, you know.
Well, no, but you do have, you have to, you're charging the cost, and then you have to pay the cost plus 50%. I don't know if you want to fine.
I almost, yeah, exactly. Well, I almost think make it 50% or up to $250, you know, if it's, I mean, obviously it's a thousand dollars to clean it up, then that covers it. But, you know, to me, if it's like, you know, what if it's $100 and then you pay 120, it's half the fine, you know, potentially. Or, I'm sorry, if it was $100, it'd be only 150, it's 50% more than the cost to clean it up. I'm just making up numbers now.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? Like, just the option to.
It's just an and instead of.
I think it's an and, exactly.
An and instead of or, I guess, yeah.
So in other words, we can clean it up and then still fine you up to $250. And I think the only other thing.
What I want to make sure is that people don't see an obligation on the village to clean it up.
Right.
They don't want to.
I think you almost leave it, you know, I mean, just take out, I don't know, I think there's a way to do it, you know, take out the alternative.
Yeah, there's another transition. I'll come up with.
And I think the only other thing I'd bring up is for habitual noncompliance, we might want to look at increasing the fine.
Want to do that?
You know, if it's the same person that never cleans it up and just doesn't care and just writes the check, that's easy, just have a necessary staff. We can try this first.
I mean, they could always go and argue in front of the judge why it is that they're habitual non-cleaner-uppers, right? I mean, they're going to have to, they could argue the fine, right? It's violation.
Yeah, they could, but what Brian's saying is sometimes for the first offense is.
250.
No, no, I understand, I understand. Or second or third or some offense, maybe not the second.
Well, I can argue against the 250, too. I mean, but if you want that, do you want, just give me some amounts.
No, I think more than three times a year.
I think habitual problem is, should have a greater penalty, at least to start. I mean, we still have a public hearing on this, and we get a lot of thinking when we have public hearings, but.
We'll do three months, 250, 500.
500 and a pound.
Ultimately, it's up to the judge, but that's the.
That's pretty serious.
You know, we've talked a lot about the danger going down the parts of Main Street, and it's a big problem.
So, that's all. I mean, again, what this is, is giving teeth to our, the law we got, it looks are five years now.
More than that, actually.
Seven years?
Exactly.
You can still, you can still call for the public hearing.
Call for the public hearing, yes. Yeah, and those couple of changes, like what you post. Yeah, because it's, the public hearings are for a few more weeks anyway.
It's July 16th.
Yeah, it's almost a month. So make those changes, and then the corrected version will be what we'll give the notice here.
So I'll make a motion to have public hearing, consider local law regarding snow and ice removal for Monday, July 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in Village Hall, if I have a second. All in favor? Connie, would you like to talk about celebrating?
Again, this year, this is the fifth year of this event, but this year is different because the Rivertown's Chamber of Commerce is playing a leading role, essentially, and they have partnered for some of the work on this with two of the Eileen Fisher groups. And that's been a wonderful new addition, so we thank Eileen Fisher, and we thank Nick Campbell and the Chamber of Commerce. But that being said, it's a week away, and I think, you know, all the social media and the buzz of people like you who are here, if you had fun over the last five years, there are things for kids, there are things for people who love history, there are eating, drinking, and there is a big part that is also new because the Main Street Schools playground, there's going to be a ribbon cutting. That was a new playground that came from fundraising. So that whole effort is being focused on in this. And even there's a, you need to sit down, you can go inside Irvington Town Hall Theater and watch the retro movie of Irvington from the 1970s.
Ooh.
Yes, there was a president, there was a presidential election. You have to keep your eyes open under that little movie. You'll see things you never thought happened here. Anyway, there's a lot, so please spread the word and come. Thank you.
So I just wanted to make the announcement that unfortunately this year, we are not going to have a student video PSA festival awards ceremony because we actually didn't receive any this year, which was very strange because the last, the first two years, we received quite a number. So I'm not sure where our communication broke down, but if anyone was planning for a video on Saturday morning in Village Hall, it's not happening.
Right. It did get left on here, but when you click through the online piece and go to the schedule, you won't see it on the schedule.
Expunged.
But there are 20-some things on the schedule, so, you know, look at the trolley and look at the American Revolutionary reenactors. So there's a lot going on. Thank you.
Looking a little further ahead, July 4th, fireworks are going to be in Matheson Park. People always call the police department and ask what time the fireworks are. They're dark, so my suggestion is on July 3rd, see what the time is dark, and that's the time they're going to start. I say approximately 9:00 PM, but please don't call the police department and ask what time the fireworks start. They're on July 4th, at dark.
And you need a pass.
You do need a park pass to get into Matheson Park. So, you can pick those up at the rec center. I think they even have extended hours a week. Check your emails for that. And the last one is a, a check of over $25,000 for our village purchasing policy, which was to branch services for the Irvington Fire Department Asbestos Abatement Program, which came out of the general fund for an amount of $27,000. There's also a second one, which was to Jesco, also from the general fund. This was for a front loader repair for the GPW, and that amount was $29,903.40.
So, Brian, before we move on, I just felt, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I wanted to make a public comment about how upsetting the immigration news has been recently with the kids being separated from the parents. And tonight, I was watching on Ari Melber's The Beat. I was listening to some of the videos that were shot undercover. You know, it seems like it's a long ways from Irvington. But what I would suggest is that we all should be speaking up, minimally calling our Washington representatives, Nita Loi in Congress, and Joe LeBrand and Shimmer in the Senate, and let them know, we might be a blue state, but the more they hear from residents, the better it is, to really talk about how this is, it doesn't fit the model of what this country is about.
The one thing I'll say is that it actually is fairly close to home. It's, it's not the exact same issue, but Abbott House has been, recently been used, the last three years, I think, give or take, as a kind of a designated site for children that are, that are here undocumented. Typically, the ones at Abbott House have come to the border on their own. And they hold them at Abbott House until they either find a foster family or their family to take care of them. But it's, as someone who lives, my house backs up to Abbott House. I hear them play soccer every day. And a positive thing I'll share is that the Spanish Club of the middle school combined with the Spanish Club from the high school and wrote letters to every single one of the children, boys and girls there, at least two letters to each of them. My wife delivered them and they were, you know, it was, it was pretty emotional reading these letters that these, these kids welcomed them to Irvington. You know, the majority of them are from Central and South America. There are some Europeans as well. But, you know, they, they thought it was a very nice thing that the schools did to welcome those children. And again, they, they're here, no, you know, they, they basically were told to come to the border. They typically run right, right across the border. We actually heard the stories and they were pretty, pretty rough. You know, to come all the way from there to Abbott House is, it's a long road. It's a long road.
And I, and I would add to your comments about Abbott House, Brian, because I think you and I and several others went up to an open house not so long ago and were able to see the kids. And some people volunteer up there, I think, who are here. And they are, Abbott House is actually participating in this event, as they did last year. And they very much want to have communication with the village people to meet them and talk to them. So, it's, it's a lovely place. And I think there's also a soccer team from the main street school that has been invited. They, they requested saying, "Hey, mommy, why can't I, why can't we play soccer together?" And so, that's getting worked out. So, there's a lovely relationship. Hang on.
I think that's great. But, I mean, my problem is, that's what place. And I look at what's happening in South Texas and other places. I mean, you've got 2,000 kids being funneled behind chain-linked fences inside an old Walmart.
Oh, yeah. I'm fully aware.
So, I mean, it's, we're lucky to have something like Abbott House nearby. And the kids that get there are lucky for the services provided there, you know, will help them, you know, acclimate to this culture and actually become, you know, prevent a lot of PTSD and other kinds of...
Well, I think it's, you know, I think the amazing thing is that that's probably a best-case scenario of the policy. And it's still dramatic for them. You know, they're in a completely foreign place, far away from, yeah. So, it's, you know, it was sad enough when we were there, you know, to see these kids that, that was actually kind of sweet. They're coloring Easter eggs, which when we realized what a strange tradition that was, to be coloring Easter eggs. You know, so they had one of the best-case scenarios. And it was still, you could tell it was, it wasn't great.
And they were, they're unaccompanied.
Unaccompanied minors, correct.
Anyway, let me move on, I guess.
Can I ask a quick question relative to that?
Why don't we wait till public?
Yeah, we're almost, we're almost there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're almost there.
Yeah, hang on.
Anyone else have comments or those with correspondence? Any other announcements? I mean, sorry. Any announcements?
No.
Let's do correspondence. We have two. One is from Susie Fromer.
Could we just say that there's been a meeting since that letter? I know this, her letter precedes a meeting that sort of, that did happen, just as an aside.
Do you want to maybe just update with the meeting?
Well, I don't know. Just, just, that's probably enough to say that we met.
Okay.
I think actually it does make sense, Brian.
I think so.
Because the state of the meeting sort of makes a lot of the points in the letter moot.
Right. So, you want to, you want to give an update?
Well, I, I don't want to say anything is, you know, done. But I'll just tell you the format of the meeting, that Mark, who's the liaison to the Green Policy Task Force, and myself, the liaison to the farmer's market, and Larry Schaffer, and, and we met to discuss this issue. And there are in the works some possibilities of working something out that could well, I mean, could well satisfy the needs that are being discussed. But there are still hurdles. But it's not as though it's been ignored. So, this letter is a little moot.
I guess the only thing that I realize as we're talking, we know what we're talking about. Other people may not. It's about continued pickup of food compost waste from the farmer's market and delivering it somewhere. Currently, it had been being delivered to the Veterans Park in Greenberg. That's because the volunteers could no longer handle the volume in terms of size and weight that was being collected. And so, they, GPTF asked if we could help them figure out a solution. And the farmer's market committee has been very supportive. And there's still a lot, there's still some questions and some interface with the school district that's required.
So, there are things, yeah. So, it's like saying, it's not a done deal, but it's being discussed. And that's probably enough to say about it, but to say that it's something that's worked out until it really is. But it's not being ignored.
It's in the process, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the other correspondence was from the Irvington Historic District Committee.
Deb is here, I see.
Deb is here, so.
Hiding in the back.
Is that my summarized version?
You're not going to read the whole thing?
I'm not reading anything tonight. I just simply wanted to be present to present to you our final letter from the Irvington Historic District Committee. It's dated June 14th. We submitted in advance. My name, by the way, is Deb Hargraves. I'm one of the co-chairs, as you know, along with Earl Ferguson. And I'm here tonight also with one of our, my fellow committee members, Sue Robinson. And we really just wanted to say thank you. We have completed our charge and our task, which I don't know how many times you actually get a committee who comes before you to say that we...
It's actually dissolved temporarily.
We did and were dissolved. And we feel good about this. But we did take the time before actually signing off to, to write a letter that gives you a nice overview. And we thought it would be good for your records and for anybody else who may come before you, who says they want to do this in another village, or you just wanted to have a perspective on what we accomplished. But we set forth the charge, which I cannot believe was back in 2011, and gave you really a year-by-year kind of overview of what it took to get from that place where you asked us to look into forming a historic district and what we did in order to establish it, identify it, label it, mark it, get it filed with the state. And more, most importantly, which was the biggest time-consuming part of our work, which was forming the historic district guidelines. So, we're very proud of the work we did. I know you are as well, because the design guide has been well-received. We've won three awards by professionals.
There's the third one. I just happen to have my props here. This is the third award.
Yeah, which was, third award, which was a surprise. I think Sue and I would say that this is actually the one that Earl tells me as an architect is the most significant because it comes from a planning body as opposed to another. So, he actually has luckily been able to be present at each of the award ceremonies. And so, we're quite happy. I'm sorry you couldn't be here tonight. But I could, if it seems appropriate to you, I would like to read off the names of the committee members, because we really did stick together over the course of...
Is that a...
Yeah, quite a few years. So, in addition to Earl and myself, John Malone, Doug McClure, Dr. Rich Wyler, Rebecca Fiorito, Neil Marr, Sue Robinson, as I indicated, who's here, and Joe Lombardi. And it really was, it was a great group because we were, we were a right composition of between residents in the village as well as outside the village. We had architects, we had lawyers, we had historians, we had members of the Historical Society. And we felt like we had a nice relationship with the Historical Society also. We went to them quite frequently for advice. And we've had other members who've come and gone, but this core group really did stick together from the start. So, it was really our pleasure to work on this. And I hope that it serves Irvington well.
Great. And also, as you were describing, we actually thought this was great because it kind of recap, as you say, not only the accomplishment, but the whole, everything from, from kind of, you know, the concept to completion, as well as it also presented us with, you know, next steps going forward. That I think this document is going to be the basis of, you know, several work sessions in the coming months, you know, to kind of take the next steps. So, it was very helpful. Something tells me this is more, you guys are more on hold than dissolving.
I'm actually here to be very clear tonight.
I have a comment.
Connie, Connie and I have spoken early about this. But I can, I can guarantee you, Earl Ferguson is still alive and well and, and ready to commit, as I'm sure some of the other committee members are.
Excellent.
But I, yes, just to finish that thought, that what, what I called a continuing advisory role, because we will need people to interface with in many issues going forward. And I think we would just probably approach all the current members and say, "Can you play an advisory role going forward?"
It would be my honor.
From your house.
Something like that. Right. I know that's in your, in your letter, too.
I would just like to formally thank Earl Ferguson and Deb Hargraves, John Malone, Doug McClure, Dr. Rich Wyler, Rebecca Fiorito, Neil Marr, Sue Robinson, and Joseph P. Lombardi. Again, that document, again, is, is, you know, going to be one of the legacies of this board, I think, even though we didn't have much to do with it, having you present it to us.
Throw Stephen Tilly's name in there.
That's true.
Thank you, yes. And he really, I mean, that was something we came to you for, that support. And you gave it to us. And I think without him and his, which, which we really, I think individually, we've all kept in touch with that group as well, because they were just fantastic to work with as well.
Great.
So, thanks again.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So, I just wanted to say to the board that I'm really excited because I thought that not just the, as Brian said, not just the schedule of completed activity, but that, the list of what needs to be done in going forward, the roadmap for the future. We really do need to, you know, as you said, talk it through. And I don't want to see a lot of time, you know, slippage. So, it's like we're not, we lose traction on what we're doing.
Yeah. And some of these things are part of the comprehensive plan, some of the pieces that are, that are in the still to-do list. So, they'll be coming up and we'll be calling.
They'll be watching.
Anything else? I have enjoyed working with this committee tremendously, really. It's been great. But it's, it's a lot of hard work. And I, and I do also thank, as you mentioned, Steve Tilly helped push this out the door. And, you know, when you get this, you also get what, what we did in terms of, you know, whereas, whereas, whereas. That's in the, in the, in the beginning of this, because, you know, it had to be connected to what our, you know, our local code says. And also, it's good.
Definitely. The last people I thank are the residents that gave input. Because I think we have...
Oh, yeah, we learned a lot.
A lot of people said we'll never get anything passed, because it's, it could be a very controversial issue. And I think that, I like to think we struck the right balance between historical preservation and property rights. You know, I think it's, I think that's why we, you know, there were definitely compromises and no one was happy. And, you know, no one was devastated by it. So, I think that that's, I think we did that as well as we can. Thanks again, everybody. Next, public comments.
Public comment.
Public comment?
Yeah, I just, I actually really just had a question. I was wondering...
You want to come up because we really can't hear very well.
So, sorry. Kathy Kaufman. I, apropos of the Abbott House residents, I was just wondering if they are residents of Irvington for, with respect to the use of Matheson Park. And I just wanted to make sure we don't have any future incidents in which people don't feel welcome. So, I want to make sure that...
I mean, they come down to, the Abbott House kids, when they come into the village, like with volunteers, I don't think they can ever turn them away from anything. But I don't know. I mean...
Well, there's a, you know, there's a gatekeeper there. So, I just wanted to be sure.
They can't, they can't travel outside the Abbott House itself by themselves. So...
So, it's a non-issue?
I think it's a non-issue. I don't know. But...
Yeah, just like for them to feel welcome everywhere in the village, including, I would love to know that there's no issue there.
They come to the police department and have wonderful meetings.
They don't just come unescorted.
Yes, of course.
You know, they've been arranged tours to the library, to the police department, to the fire department. One of the problems now is that there's many more children. So, the initial round of tours, we could bring six at a time, but now they have over 50 staying there. So, it makes it a little bit more challenging. But the staff is not just going to bring all 50 kids to any place. Certainly, there's a good cooperation, there's good dialogue. And so, we will, of course, be very welcoming to them.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, I'm sure that that's the case. I just wanted to be sure that the rec department knows that they're there and who they are and that they're welcome.
I'm pretty sure they do, but I'll double check.
Okay, thanks. I also didn't know, my, my one comment was about the garage thing, but I wasn't sure we really spoke about that.
We haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay, cool. So, I'll save my comment for another time for that.
It's about another three minutes away.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Other public comment?
Other public comment?
Yeah.
Hi, Bill Thompson. I'm one of the owners of the Hudson Loft. And I want to talk about the noise ordinance. I've been working with Larry on it. We've been having some, some problems with noise. The police are coming down regularly and disrupting the business. And, you know, I go back to the, to the noise ordinance law, and it's very vague. It's not very clear about what is a nuisance and what isn't a nuisance. And, yeah, I know you guys understand how, how that works, because you put decibel levels into your new roof floor ordinance. So, you understand that there's, has to be a mark to, to be able to judge what noise is. Like, 70 dBs of grateful day might be great for Larry, but not for, for Janice, you know? So, it's, it's, can't be an arbitrary kind of thing. It has to be, in my opinion, it has to be a hard number. So, you know, I've been talking to Larry about it a lot. And I just, I just feel that, I felt tension with him on Friday. And it's just, it's, I don't want tension between us. I'd like to, you know, talk to you guys and see if there's a way that we could look at the noise ordinance and come up with something that is, that is more pointed, you know, some, a number that says, "You're, you're disturbing the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood at this level." Because every time the police come down, I have, I have recordings, I have dB, I have decibel level meter readings in the area. And, you know, I could, I could play them for you. I don't think it's necessary to do that. But I don't feel, I feel like I'm within the confines of the law. But my business is being disrupted. I have people that are refusing to sign contracts. So, I'm getting financially damaged by this. I was considering bringing David Steinmetz with me tonight, but I chose to not do that. I don't want to lawyer up. And right away, I'd like to come and have a conversation with, with you to see if there's a way we could work together to try to tighten up the law. So, it's not arbitrary. I know, Brian, you've been down to listen to it. And it's, you know, it's a very subjective thing. And it's, I'm being financially damaged. And I need to figure out...
The laws are, the law is not, it's definitely big.
Yeah. So, I'm asking for your help to see if we can make something more concrete here. So, I can move forward with my business and...
One thing that would be helpful, at least to me, would be to know what would work for you. Not right now, but I mean, if you could supply us. Because, you know, what are your typical hours of operation? I don't know any of this stuff, you know? And what kind of noise levels are you looking to have?
So, when I spoke to David Steinmetz today, one of the things that he offered, and it's up to you guys whether you'd be interested in doing it or not, he would, he would be willing to compile some data from other municipalities on how they regulate their noise. Because a lot of people do have decibel level limits that are, you know, concrete. If you'd like me to do that with him, I'd be glad to do it and give it, have, have him give it to Mary Ann.
Sure.
Well, it'd be useful. One of my concerns, just off the cuff, because I know we probably shouldn't be talking about this in depth, but just from a public comment, we need to, we really need to sit down and talk with you in more detail.
Be glad to.
You know, I know the noise, a lot of the noise comes from the loft at the third floor. And so, where it's most impactful are the houses right behind, as you know, because the third floor is equal to their first floor because of the palisade there.
Love to walk through with you.
We could follow up with Larry and see where, see where it is. I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it's very vague anyway. You know, how it, how it ends up, I don't know. But the vagueness, I know it was difficult for the police. And it's kind of like, it's arbitrary all the time. And the hardest stop is later than we actually thought and things like that. So, I think we should, I think it's worthwhile exercise to look at.
So, one of the things that, that is upsetting to me about it is the, the police say, "Well, we got a call, so we have to come down and act." That, to me, is wrong in itself. Because they got a call, doesn't mean that I'm violating the law. And they're taking that as, as I'm violating the law. And they're coming down and giving us a hard time. Turn it down and shut it down, get everybody out. I can't have that anymore. I need something, I need something from the board that says that this won't happen again until we resolve it. Because... again until we resolve it, because it's damaging to me, and I need it to stop until we figure it out.
Well, I think I'll say, we'll, we'll discuss it as a board.
Yeah, we'll discuss it.
You know, yeah.
That's when our conversation went contentious, because he was looking for insurance.
Yeah, I'm looking for insurance.
It was happening, I wasn't giving it to them.
Yeah, so, I mean, to me, it's tough, because I actually get the phone calls as soon as I get called the police, and they call me, and they complain about it, and they say, well, come down and hear it, and I'm like, I'm not coming down every Friday and Saturday night, so I want to resolve this, probably after you, and probably a second, one or two, so, one way or the other.
I, I really want, you know, I've put a lot of money into soundproofing and noise abatement, and we've changed our policies, like, you know, there's, you can't be over this dB level, you're not allowed to have sublifers, you can't have omnidirectional speakers, we've, we've done a lot of work to try to limit it, and I think we've been very successful in it, and, you know, I'm not, you know, I think we're, I'm where I need to be, and I just need your help now.
Okay. We would definitely-
So, how, how should we follow up, where will we leave it?
Maybe I'll, I'll sit, I'll catch up with Larry, figure out where we are, and then go back to the rest of the board and figure out a way, a way forward, and we'll let you-
You'll reach out to me?
Yeah.
Once we decide, we can have a meeting, so, you know, to see, I understand all the issues.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? If not, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Anyone want to talk about city services, have a permit?
No, I'm waiting for a sample.
Otherwise, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, if I can get a second.
Second.
All on paper. Now, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, consider local law, any zoning code with respect to garages, if I can get a second, all on paper. Public hearing is now open.
Can we just explain what the law's about?
Please.
Yes, the point of the law is to broaden the use of garages, and it came from a recommendation in the comprehensive plan committee that, comprehensive plan update, that garages should be, or you should allow them for more than storage of automobiles. Right now, under the code, the only thing allowed is the storage of automobiles in a garage, and so that, and, and the, people thought that people should be able to use it for other reasons, they couldn't, assuming that it meets what would be the state building code requirements, that you could have accessory apartments there, or you might have a work studio there, or you might have other residential use, because right now you can't, and that, that was a recommendation of the comp plan update, and it was pretty easy, so we put that one into law, right, so, what it does is it broadens the use of garages, and then the other changes relating to the accessory apartments are previously, because of the restriction that they can only be used for the storage of automobiles, accessory apartments weren't allowed in, in garages, and this change is that the accessory, that they could be, again, assuming that they meet, you know, the building code requirements for legal space.
Right, so, I mean, I think, I think we started off with a very simple premise, which was, people use their garages for more than just putting automobiles in it, and, you know, technically those were all legal uses, so, bye.
And, and not only, not only is that the way the code reads, but there was a zoning board interpretation on this a few years back, I think somebody came in with an application to the planning board to use it for some kind of studio or something, and it couldn't be, and so this was changed.
If anyone on the board, I mean, we've talked about this before, obviously.
Well, I have some comments, but this is, this is good, I'm interested in the public comment, and I might have some comments, too, but-
Okay.
But later.
Sure. We will open it up to the public, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Calvin, and I live at 99 Bracebridge, and my husband Gordon is an artist, and we just moved into a space that has a large barn that would fit into, I believe, your amendment, it's a, it's a barn that has to, we're applying for it to be a studio space, and I just wanted to go into the record for the voice of the artist in this conversation, so that it may or may not affect the language. So, I write today to remind the board of trustees that suburbs are now considered an alternative location to the city for art-making, and for the board to consider including private studio space, spaces in their thinking about additional buildings. More and more artists can afford to, can't afford to live in the city today, skyrocketing housing and studio costs are driving working artists beyond the city boundaries, many artists have family, jobs, and stable economic support, seek studio space in the suburbs and surrounding regions. What defines someone as an artist is broader now, more activities qualify as art, such as digital art, film as art, conceptual art, public art, and paper sculpture, among others. Large canvases, some larger than the standard height of a wall, are much more common. As a result, a wider range of studio locations and residences are required. As difficult as it is to find, I'm shortening my letter, you can have this in the record, as difficult as it is to find studio space, it can be found in adaptive reuse of garages and outbuildings on properties with homes. I'm not certain today that it's important, in today's discussion about the use of buildings, it sounds like what you've done includes studio spaces, but I believe that it's important to remember as a broad value for consideration, regardless of the size of the studio, and I think this is another part of what is, it's, there's a limit for, right now, for what is allowed for a studio space, which is 325 square feet. Regardless of the size, 1,000 square feet, 500 square feet, 325 square feet, these spaces can be a private space of art-making that should not in any way disturb the neighbors or residents. This work is not commercial, does not require visitors, as its gallery does, and should be encouraged.
Brian, let me just say, the, the new home occupation law, I mean, the new, yeah, home occupation law eliminates what are the square foot limitations, which right, right now the code does have a square foot limitation on, on home occupations, and that's not in the, in the draft law.
This is, this is in the law.
With the proposed amendment, there would be no limit on size.
Post this amendment, there would be no limit.
Not the one we're doing tonight.
This has nothing to do with the garage.
This is in the Monday, July 16th public hearing, so, you're just a little behind.
It does have to be-
Behind?
Well, you're ahead.
Go ahead.
We're a little behind, exactly.
Should I submit this later?
No, it's okay.
It does have to be incidental to the residential use of the house, you can't just have, you know, an art studio-
And no people.
But, but there is no square footage limitation in the proposed law.
So, the, yes, I think this, the, the second law that we haven't done yet, that we are looking at, that Mary Ann read at the very beginning, I don't know if you're hearing it, which is that one.
This is the, this is the draft law, if you guys want to take a look at that.
For the home occupation, so these two-
That's a, that's a little public hearing in the lot, 16th. Which is our next meeting, incidentally, it seems like a long way away, but it's our next meeting.
And it does also provide that it could be, the home occupation could be in an accessory building, which right now it can't be.
Right, so your barn is exactly what we're trying to target with our next law, because it makes sense.
Okay, so this is a smiley meeting, it's okay.
The two, the two laws, you know, go together in some ways, but they, they're separate in some ways, so-
Well, we just wanted it to be mentioned, so whatever discussion is happening, that it's considered as part of the priority.
Absolutely, and I think a lot, a lot of this came from, I mean, I don't think any of us realized that garage, well, we did only because you told us, but that garages can only be used for the storage of automobiles.
Right.
You know, I think, how many, how many garages actually are?
And, and things are changing, so, you know, it's important to have these other uses, especially if it's just someone.
Absolutely, right, you can give it to Larry.
The only thing you can't do is put a huge outdoor display of neon on the barn.
No, no considerations for that right now.
Any other public comments on garages?
About garages.
Have we spoken about the for gain part? I'm sorry, I'm like terrible at doing these meetings.
Uh, yeah, it's all on the table now, anything about garages?
So, now I can make my comments about for gain?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, Kathy Kaufman, here again.
So, my, my concern was about the restriction or the, the statement that these spaces could be used for accessory apartments, but not for gain, and my concern is-
No, 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 it's a-
Is that struck from?
No, 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 no.
Read the whole sentence.
Except for permitted home occupations and accessory apartments, the building shall not be operated for gain. It can't be operated for gain, except that it can be operated for gain for home occupations and accessory apartments.
So, you can operate an accessory apartment for gain? Did I get all the negatives worked out? Okay, so I actually misunderstood that, and then we had corresponded about that, and I thought, it was clarified, but I guess it wasn't. Okay, well, that's interesting. Then my only other question with respect to this is, I appreciate that, I had actually read it, I want you to know that before I even got involved in this, I did read it. Is the issue of, and I'm more curious than anything else about the setback requirements for zoning with relation to garages, it-
Does not have special setbacks for-
Oh, they no longer do?
No, they don't, and most municipalities do, and most municipalities, actually, a lot of the garages are closer to the property lines, but our code does not-
So, that's grandfathered?
Yeah, our code doesn't have separate setbacks for accessory buildings.
Then, I'm good, thank you, that was all I was wondering about.
It's a very great meeting. Anyone else, anyone else have easy questions that we've already answered?
I have a hard one.
I have one for clarification, can you remind me again where we came down on renting the garage out for storage?
That was exactly my next, because that would be for gain. We didn't-
So, that wouldn't be allowed?
We didn't discuss it, and it's not here, but here's something I, I would put out, maybe you're thinking the same way, and I-
No, I'm not thinking that anyway, I'm just-
Yeah, I know, I, I wasn't either.
Not only is it, it's an issue that the building department raised, and I don't, I do not believe this is happening in Irvington, that it's an issue, you see, where the, for garages are used for repairs, for, for repairing lodges, not, not for other people's cars, not repairing home cars.
So, the example I was going to bring up, when I read this over and over again and thought about this, was this circumstance, which I know would not be allowed by the way we have it in this draft, and that is, if you have a garage, and you have, let's say, a neighbor or somebody who would like to store their car, simply use it as a garage and pay you for that, and you would be, it would be for gain, and there would be a vehicle in there. I mean, I'm trying to think, you know, what would be unintended consequences, this is something you discussed, I don't remember.
You could have scored some points.
Well, I, because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a repair shop.
I know.
I know, so I'm, I'm just-
You would just have to do that, I mean, if you want to make that change, I would not make it to this, I would not make it to this, the, the concern there is, you, you want to make sure, if you want to allow that, that's fine, but you do have to make sure that it doesn't mean that you're putting your car on-
Right, right, instead of becoming conflict with that other provision that we worked out, that you can't rent at your garage and park yours on the street.
Right, right, but let's say you have a two-car garage, or you have a, or you don't have a car, because you walked to the train, and you know, chugging ding.
That change is-
Yeah, so I know, I know it's not in here, but I don't remember, I remember discussing the thing about the repair shop, but I would, I'd like to think about it, I don't know how people will come down on that, but to me, it's, it's beginning to sound very reasonable if it's controlled in the way you just mentioned.
Yeah, I think, my, my suggestion would be, I think that'd be a significant change, we'd probably have to post it again, I think it'd be good, I think it'd be good to get this, I think it'd be good to get this posted, or this passed, and then look at adding a, the potential to rent out, you know, if you're not adding, you know, we have to work on the language, if you're not adding additional cars to this, you know, to the street or something, but we can definitely look at that as phase two of the great garage laws of 2018.
Well, if I'm missing something, would, the current law does not require any kind of review by any, a planning, a planning board or any other kind of thing, it's-
No, not, you know, if, if-
And there's no permit either, right?
In my, in my market, if you were doing work on it, let's say you're going to make it into a studio-
Oh, of course, right, if you're running-
Well, yeah, but that's actually quite frequent, it's going to come to your attention. Right now it hasn't, because nobody, you can't use it except to store your cars, but I imagine now that people might, you know, use it for accessory apartments, they might use it for studios, they're probably going to do some work on it, and then they would require a building permanent site number view.
Yeah, okay, because my garage has a marble floor, and, I said, my garage has a marble floor and other things like that, so I don't have to go to the planning board. But, the thing, so, but if I, the thing that, it's got me concerned about this renting out for, and, and storage of other, other people automobiles, is then, that does seem like you need to have a wider review at that point.
Yeah, so we would, we won't change this, I'm only bringing it up as out there.
I mean, for the neighborhood impact.
Yeah.
For the more public comment.
More public comment? Yeah, please.
Hi, Bill Moss.
So, I thought I understood it before you began speaking about the law. So, if someone wants to use their garage as a, as an apartment, and rent it out to some kindly stranger, is that legal under this law?
Yes, I mean, you do have to meet other elements of the law, you have to meet the accessory apartment law, you know, there's, there's requirements for the add, and that includes meeting the state building code, but yes, that would be-
But if your building meets the state building code, there's no other review needed?
Well, yeah, accessory apartments do require accessory apartment permits.
Which does, how does that, does that come through here, or is it-
No, they go through the planning board.
Okay, now, the other, the other question that you brought up is the, any setback rule on garages, there, there is none?
I mean, no, there, there isn't now, I mean, there must have been at some point, because a lot of the garages are closer to the property line than houses could be, but Irvington doesn't have a setback, a separate setback, it has the same setbacks as for your house.
Meaning building a garage, as a, but when the-
If you're building a garage and the side yard setback is 15 feet in your neighborhood, then it's got to be 50 feet for the garage, if the rear yard setback is 50 feet, there's got to be 50 feet.
But that's not, that doesn't apply to whether you, to a garage that's already sitting there, and you then begin using it as an apartment.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, that, that, I mean, that, that creates, that's the, that question is the inspiration for why we came down tonight, not, not that we don't like seeing you all, and congratulations on your Tony, Brian.
Thank you very much.
I guess we, I don't know how to, what to suggest you do, but we, we are concerned because we have a neighbor, a neighbor who we believe to be very friendly, and we don't know that there'll ever be an issue with this neighbor, but there's a garage right on the property line that goes up two stories, and, and faces right into the back of our house, its garage, but under this rule, with very little bureaucratic friction, it could be, it could be turned into a, an apartment that faces right into our back, our, our back area, and I don't know whether, what your thoughts are, is that would there be some review process that would cause any question on that?
The accessory apartment law has some restrictions, but it's not, it's not going to say you can't have it, it'd be too close to the neighbor. I mean, that was an issue I know I raised with the board, and the board was, was comfortable with it, I mean, it didn't, yes, that would be a consequence of it.
This was attempt to, all of these different iterations of what happens with garages and the various issues that have been brought up tonight, what we've been struggling with is how to balance various needs-
Yes.
And goods, right? One of the things that started, garages were not considered outbuildings, first of all, so we had to change that so that they could even be considered for some of the other uses, other than parking a car. There's a big need for affordable apartments in this community, which we're very attuned to, there's also a big need for people to have other income streams by having a rent-producing situation. Your particular, what you're looking at is not some place you would like to see an apartment, but we, we have to try to look at, you know, the, the big picture for, in balancing the needs. People want to have studios, people want to use garages for other uses, people don't want extra cars on the street if it can be avoided.
Well, let me see, I'm, I'm just checking what the requirements are for the accessory apartment, and it does say, there is a general requirement, that it shall not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood in which it's located, and applying this requirement, the planning board should consider the effect of the proposed accessory apartment on parking traffic, noise, congestion, appearance, and any other factor the planning board deems relevant to the character of the neighborhood. But frankly, I mean, to be perfectly honest, it would be a stretch-
Yes.
To say that, that language is in there, but I think it would be a stretch to say that-
So, stand in front of the- To stand in front of the planning board, go ahead.
Although, for the planning board to find that that would change the character of the neighborhood after that accessory apartment, there is some given language, but.
And it does, but it's not a right. I mean, you do have to get planning board approval for an accessory apartment, you can't just like put out a sign for rent.
Yeah.
You know, there is, there is, and, you know, I don't think anything in this village happens without bureaucratic.
Bureaucratic friction was the phrase I.
That's a good term, we use that.
My experience with the planning board would be if they, if a neighbor came up with a complaint about visibility like that, I would think they would, it's well within their rights to require some sort of screening.
Yeah, screening.
So there might be not blocking the change to the use of the building, but to do other kinds of landscape or fencing, or whatever it is to try to make it more, mitigate the impacts.
That's a good point. Yeah, good point, Mark.
Anything else you want, Mary Ann? Nope? I'm checking with my consultant.
That's good. Smart man.
Thank you. Or I'll hear, I will hear. All set? Okay.
Thank you. Good point. Any other public comment?
Just that I'm not for it. I think you're asking for problems in Irvington, the safe, so-called safe community, also where there's a parking problem, and people turn their driveways into accessory apartments, or where they're bringing in outsiders, you've got additional parking problems here. So I'm also concerned about that.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I don't think it should be allowed if a person uses the garage to park their car and there's a problem on their street. So that would eliminate half of Irvington right there.
Actually, the code does, that is something the code regulates, it can't require, you can't use something that would require, if it's a required parking space in the garage, you couldn't use the accessory apartment for that.
Well, what about the person renting, let's say, the accessory apartment, they, there's another car on the.
I'm not, I'm just saying that parking is one of the things that the planning board does take into consideration, that it is not parking.
Correct.
In addition to which there are code requirements for the number of, the number of spaces required for the accessory apartment and for the main, the main building.
Anyone else? Anyone on the board? You guys ready to vote?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing to consider the local law amending the zoning code respecting garages, if I got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a slightly revised resolution.
Okay.
That takes into account the seeker, which I missed.
Yeah.
Mary Ann's smiling at me. So if I could read the resolution?
Please. Give me a break?
Yes. Whereas the adoption of the law amending zoning code, the zoning code for respective garages is an unlisted action under the State Harmless Quality Review Act, and the Board of Trustees has determined that such adoption will have no negative effects. Now, those therefore being resolved, the negative declaration of the seeker is issued, and will resolve the adoption of the law amending your zoning code for respective garages.
How would I vote?
I will make, I will make a motion, if I can get a second?
As amended, yes.
All in favor?
We always do this secret thing.
So what happens at the first vote, where we pass something illegal? I'm putting in quotes, you're going to pass it without the seeker?
We just passed it now, didn't we?
Yep.
It's done.
Yeah, we had it, we're good. The next is a work contract for Town Hall Theater, Plaza in Burgess, 2018-10. Thank you.
So just a quick, quick background on this, this is the project to make modifications in front of Town Hall, that's primarily funded by grant money. We did only receive one bid, the bid was higher than we expected, we did have a meeting with the bidder, and we believe that there will be a significant credit change order coming in our direction. I'm not going to suggest what the amount is, but it's something that is closer to fitting within our budget. What I, what I'm asking, since we do have a gap in meetings in the summer, is that you adopt this resolution as it's presented, which is pretty much the same as any other contract resolution, but the, but it adds on that it's, the entitled award is subject to a successful negotiation of an initial credit change order. And obviously I'll report back what that is, you know, the details, but, but at least it allows me the latitude to work between now and having to wait until July 16th potentially. We want to get the contractor going this summer if possible. If it turns out that, yeah, if it turns out that we're unsuccessful in negotiating a proper number, then all of this goes away and we'll rebid it. So that's, those are your two scenarios, but we're holding out hope that we can negotiate. I think we had a good conversation in the first, first meeting.
Did they misunderstand the scope or something?
No, I think there's, there's a little bit of uncertainties that they priced in, which I think we were able to alleviate their concerns. And then there's a little, a few changes in the scope that would also reduce the price.
So you just want me to read this as is, and then you'll amend it?
Yeah, I just want an explanation, say, understand what that little phrase means at the end there.
Okay.
This is an important thing, we'd certainly like to move it forward.
Yeah. Whereas the sealed bid was received and opened on June 6, 2018, at 11:00 AM in Village Hall as follows, contractor Louis Scoppietti, Inc., for $264,300. Whereas Village Administrator Review, the bid submitted and determined that is in order and responsive to the specifications, now therefore be resolved to our contract 2018-10 for the Town Hall Theater Plaza improvements in the amount of $264,300 to Louis Scoppietti, Inc., and to authorize Village Administrator to execute said contract subject to the successful negotiation of an initial credit change order. I'll make the motion if I can get a second? All in favor? One unrelated thing to the contract I was thinking of was, when I was thinking about Villa La Varo and the recent sale, I thought one thing that we don't have in Irvington is a, is a name for Adam C.J. Walker. And I thought maybe this plaza was something that would be kind of a really cool thing to name after her. This is something to think about, if we have time, because it's not done yet, but we'll put a nice plaque up and maybe name it, name the plaza after Adam C.J. Walker. So I was thinking about places in town, and the problem with, most of the streets already have names, and to change them is always problematic. But I was thinking of a place, this was something that popped into my mind, because it's something new and kind of a cool spot, and it's very essentially located, and a lot of people see it, but think about other places too. Just throw it out there. Reports of board standing committees and officers, trustee PBA's on reports, starting with you, Mr. Guinellon.
I'm going to take a pass tonight.
Okay. Dr. Guinellon?
Looking back on the last couple of days, the annual baseball picnic was a great success last Tuesday. We congratulate all participants, and thank all coaches and sponsors for another great year. The graduation, high school graduation was a beautiful day, I was not there, but I heard from neighbors, it was celebrated Saturday in Matheson Park, and it was followed by the annual PBA sleepover in Matheson Park on Saturday night. On Sunday morning, I saw the. Just a few meetings looking forward, on Friday, June 22nd, the Irvington Parks Recreation Committee will be, I'm sorry, on Friday, June 22nd, Irvington Recreation and Parks Department, along with the Hebrew Home, Caring Kind, and the Westchester Recreation and Parks Society, are hosting the first annual overnight softball tournament for Alzheimer's awareness at Cedar Hudson. Play will begin at 11:00 PM, and the championship will conclude at 10:00 AM.
The neighbors are notified, the lights are going to be on all night.
Well, I'm saying this because it's the time of day when Alzheimer's patients are most confused, so that's why they kind of chose to do it overnight.
So check with Joe about that.
I mean, just to notify, because those people, those people, the people on Long South Buckhead especially, I get very concerned about when the lights are left on.
And just a couple of upcoming meetings, Irvington Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee will meet this Wednesday night, June 20th, 7:00 PM at the Senior Citizens Center. The Irvington Woods Committee will meet this Thursday, June 21st, at the Old Town Elementary.
Thank you.
Ah, well, you've already heard about the Historic District Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, the theater, we mentioned the theater. There are commissioners that meet all year, monthly, and I would, you know, they, they don't generally meet over the summer, and there is no theater performances during the summer, as you know, it's a very last thing that they'll squeeze in, is the movie at the Celebrate Irvington, because it can get very hot in the theater. But just, if you, if you know, the commissioners thank them for their service all year, they meet every month, and they think through all the issues related to the theater. And the farmer's market, we've talked about it a little bit also. The Highway Department widened the road and installed 220 feet of new curb at 94 and 96 Fargo Lane. Prepared four catch basins on Victor Drive and Carla Lane. There is also cleaning catch basins, working on mapping of the village cap basin and drainage system, line painting and filling puddles, and that's it.
And milling going on.
Oh, yes, there is milling, but I didn't.
Fargo and Victor, from what I could see.
I think, Larry, you sent out messages about the milling, milling and paving, right?
Yeah, I think Sunnyside Lane will probably, probably be put off until Monday, by the looks of it, but trying to nail that down.
That's coordination with Harry Towns, my friend.
Actually, we're doing the work, and Harry Towns is reimbursing.
That's good coordination.
I mean, for people, anybody who might be coming in to this, I guess, on Saturday, they won't be running into this.
No.
Milling and paving.
No, no, the Mondays.
Yeah, right. Yes, got it.
It's a good segue with the Village Administrator's report.
It's, well, it's funny you mentioned the, so milling going on. Carla Lane, the contractor began milling that, normally you mill out about two inches of pavement, and you get down to the base, and then you put the new asphalt on top. They milled about a half an inch and they hit gravel, so there really wasn't much of a base there. So that's bad news, because we're going to be doing some patching where the gravel is, and it was probably the way the road was constructed, you know, 30 years ago, I don't know. And then we'll be putting electric asphalt on top, so it's going to cost a little extra. Should have a functioning road, but it's not going to be as easy.
Was that one of the roads that might have been offered to the village after the, rather than built by the village?
I don't know the history of it. Didn't look it up. Could be anything. I mean, Victor Drive was fine, but Carla, which ended off with it, is, may have been built later separately, I'm not sure.
Is that it?
That's it.
Village Attorney's report?
Yeah.
Public comment?
Public comment? Last chance.
A few of us?
A few of whom, for all of us, actually. The home occupation law will be sent to the planning board. The endorsement letter is on your list, but I'm happy to help if you need it.
Sure.
The contacting the tourism director is on your list, but I'm happy to help. And, let's see, we'll be scheduling a meeting to discuss the noise ordinance at some point, figure out who's involved with that. And the last is to notify the neighbors about Cedar Hudson Park. Are you on that, or you?
I just, I just did, okay. That's off the list now.
And can I also put in to send out a few more email blasts through the week?
Yes.
One.
I'll put it on my list.
Okay.
I already did it.
I will, so I'll make a motion to adjourn, adjourn, adjourn as points, motion for adjournment, if I got a second before I stop anymore.
What do you want to do? Adjourn?
Adjourn, please.
Okay. And do something else?[1795.64]